Commissioner List, will you lead us into the evening's invocation?
I certainly will, Mr. Mayor.
Please rise for your prayer. Our most gracious heaven Father, we thank you for the city of Medea Beach and all the blessings that you bestowed. And we ask that you continue to keep this commission focused on what's very important from you. We ask that you also keep the family of Charlie Parker in your arms and continue to take care of them as they've had the loss of Charlie. There's so many things that we are thankful for today, Lord. Thank you for all the people that are in harm's way that we can sit here freely to discuss the politics of Medea Beach. We always pray these things in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Polk?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the provided minutes.
I salute Mr. Mayor.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion on the minutes or any corrections? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Polk?
Yes.
At this time, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I salute Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the agenda? The seat here.
We're taking one of the proclamations off our first one.
Yes, so matter of fact, we'll probably have to go ahead and amend that.
Motion.
Motion. We can actually remove one of the proclamations from tonight's agenda, which will be for the, I don't have it, say.
Recognition.
Yeah, recognition for the women's health.
Mr. Mayor, the only comment that I'd have is if we can kind of postpone and push off as many proclamations or presentations we've got for the next thirty to sixty days, just so we'd have some auditorium space to do it the right way. I know some of these are timely and it's because it's the month of, you know, whatever, the ones that we have to do, we should do, but anything that we can push off, we should.
And I agree with Mr. City Manager, once again, these were timed, so we need to go and take care of these.
But now this, we're going to postpone one that was for the week.
We're not postponing it. We're going to go ahead and just mail it to them.
Got you, got you.
So it's second one for the Coast Guard will be tonight. So can I get an amended motion on that?
Don't make that happen. I'm, I shall amend my.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, next proclamations. I have a proclamation here for Safe Boating Week. If the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, please join me. And ladies and gentlemen, if you don't mind, if you would introduce yourself to the audience on the laptop there to the commission, I'd appreciate it.
I'm Carleen Thompson and Coast Guard Auxiliary, actually.
I'm Jim Oliver, Coast Guard Auxiliary.
Thank you, sir. Well, we have a proclamation here for Safe Boating Week, May sixth through May twenty-four, two thousand fifteen. Recreational boating is fun and enjoyable, and we are fortunate that we have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure boating demands. However, our waterways can become crowded at times and be a place of chaos and confusion. Not knowing or obeying navigation rules or rules of the road, drinking alcohol, taking drugs while operating a boat, or choosing not to wear a life jacket when doing so is clearly not a smart thing to do. Are all examples of human error or a lack of proper, proper, excuse me, of proper judgment. One particular behavior that can reduce the number of voters, excuse me, numbers of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year by approximately eighty percent is by wearing of a life jacket. It is a simple task that has the potential to reduce terrible losses in lives. Whereas on average, seven hundred people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately seventy percent of these fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat equipment or environmental factors. And whereas the sufficient number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today if they had worn their life jackets. And whereas today, life jackets are more comfortable, more effective, and more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. In testimony whereof, I Travis Palladino, Mayor of the city of Medea Beach, Florida, on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners of the city of Medea Beach, here unto subscribe my name, have caused the official seal of the city of Medea Beach to here unto affect to the city of Medea Beach on the twelfth day of May, two thousand fifteen. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I'm sorry about that. Not enough eyeballs on me today.
Jim, if I can get you to tighten up a little bit.
Okay.
And Councilman and Mr. Mayor, we greatly appreciate your support for safety. As you know, without every other one, something happens around.
And once again, guys, y'all do a fantastic job over there. I've been over here several times. I actually have licensed one-hundred-ton captain myself, so I've been through the safety classes. My original safety class that I did was through the auxiliary. It was actually at the candy station. I was sixteen years old and I had my first boat. So knowing the rules of the road is very important. Safety equipment on the boat is, I know we had a discussion earlier, guys, and on an average, a million trips leave out John's Pass a year, fishing trips leave out that pass. So, I mean, it's what y'all do for our community is outstanding. The classes that you have out there are excellent, and I want to thank you very much on behalf of the city of Medea Beach.
Thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you, sir.
We wanted to recruit you to come and give us a fucking tour.
Okay.
We'd like you all to come over and visit anytime you'd like. We need the first Monday and then Monday.
Thank you.
And the parking lot's full, which is fantastic.
Yes.
If you need to take the boating class.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I believe, I believe Earth is the, your classes are shown on our city websites. Is that still correct? If we could just check on that, I believe we before we did.
It's the first Saturday of every month.
Link, I'll double check.
We can take a look.
Send your children, grandchildren, whatever.
Thank you.
How'd you know it was a granddaddy? Thank you.
Shave you all the pictures.
He's almost thirty-one days old. Let me send him down there.
All right, next public comment. This section is reserved for public comment on matters that pertain to city business and which are not on the agenda. City comment, uh, public comment is limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak this evening?
I think they're coming in.
Yeah. A little bit of coercing. You give them a little background.
Well, just for.
Oh, are we first?
Sorry.
Yeah, you're first.
All right. Just, just for, for record, you need to let State Manager name and your address.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Paul DC. This is my wife Judy DC. We are residents of Medea Beach at five eighty John's Pass Avenue.
Wow, it's our anniversary of four years being here.
Congratulations. And we love it here and we plan to spend the rest of our lives here. But we're, we're here to talk about the illegal renting, which continues to be a problem. And I wanted to let you know what an incredible community this particular residential zone are one, six months minimum. And we already caught the guy who was doing it and we've collected a lot of information for you guys, and he pled guilty. And one of the things I did want to mention before you go on to the, what he's been doing since then, is that I think the time for zero tolerance is now. This amnesty for first-time offenses is not working. I understand that we're going to be hiring a deputy, and I think that's a step that's certainly in the right direction. But it's, you have no idea what it's like to truly be a prisoner in your own backyard, and that's what we were, very nice home. And this guy was flaunting the rules. He was, and he still continues to make a mockery of the laws of Medea Beach and of Pinellas County, including recently, this past Sunday, running his sprinkler from about eight in the morning until about nine at night. No, no, paying no attention to the laws of when you are and are not allowed to, the days that you are and are not allowed to. Fixing the retaliatory action and fixing the sprinklers so that they shoot over the fence in our backyard where we have some new plantings and palms.
And it is retrained water, so it's, as you can imagine, it's tough.
I just want you to know how this really does affect everybody's lives and not just us, although we take the brunt, us and the neighbors on the other side. We wish, we would like to encourage everybody not only to get on board with this, but to feel free to call the deputies. I think people are afraid to do that. But they have been nothing but terrific under these whole circumstances, Deputy Luckett and Deputy Crager. And I know that this is a problem for our community. And one last thing I'd like to say, because we read a little bit with interest what was in the paper recently about this ongoing problem, not just in our community, but spreading down the beach. I think that full enforcement of this is not going to give a black eye to this as a tourist community. I think the only people that would be offended by enforcement of this are people that are breaking the law. I don't know of any other resident or people that are visiting legitimately and doing legitimate rentals are not going to be upset with enforcement of the legal rights.
The end. I take it my very minutes.
This is it, I forgot. But anyway, I wanted to again thank Mayor Polk. She's been very active in all of this, and Deputies Crager and Luckett.
Yes, and Burton too.
Burton, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Would anybody else like to speak this evening? At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I salute.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission on the consent agenda? Mr. City Manager, what is staff's recommendation?
Staff recommendations for approval of votes, Mr. Mayor. The first one is for a major grant that we received, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for the Marina project that's already completed. And then the, item number two is just a technical issue that we need you to respond to.
Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Lister?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Unfinished business, not new business ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero four. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read by title only?
Yes, Mayor. Commissioners, this is the ordinance that I was asked prepared dealing with the portable and A-frame signs. We had discussed this once before. I'll read it by title only. Ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero four. An ordinance of the city of Medea Beach, Florida relating to A, relating to A-frame and flutter signs, amending the code of ordinance as chapter eighty-two definitions and chapter one oh two signs. Amending section eighty-two dash two to revise the definition of portable sign, delete the definition of sandwich sign, and create a definition of A-frame sandwich board. Deleting sub-paragraph five of section one oh two dash five, amending section one oh two dash forty-nine to provide for permitting exclusion of A-frame sandwich board signs and flutter flags. Deleting sub-paragraph D of section one oh two dash one fifty-six and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero four by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance twenty fifteen dash four. We passed on first reading.
I second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
I know that we've been trying for a long time to come up with a sign ordinance that makes most of the people happy. I know we're not going to make all of the people happy, but I think we've come up with something here that really does. It gets the, you know, their presence out, which is what signs are supposed to do. So it seems to be making, I'd say, the majority of the people happy here, and I don't see a need to revisit this for a while. Hopefully, we can put this baby to bed.
Thanks.
All right.
Mr. City Manager, staff recommendation?
Not for approval.
Any further comment?
Terry Lister, Commissioner Lister hit right on the head. I mean, everyone throughout town is thrilled with it. There's been no criticisms of it whatsoever by anybody. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. Nick Lewis, five sixty-one person driver. I would like to speak in opposition to allowing the permanent placement of flutter signs in the city. This has value. The flutter signs seem to have a lot of value to new businesses, and I don't object to that. The current code requirement for allowing sixty days for new businesses, I think, is very adequate. But the permanent placement of two signs for business and businesses and other signs for groups of businesses to be permanently placed, I think, is not to the advantage of the city. I think it's inconsistent with the basic principle for the sign code and other parts of code like extension of premises or outdoor displays. These signs tend to get ratty and poor-looking over time, and the code has not been adequately enforced for quite some time. And one example of a very poor appearing sign is one presently at Walgreens. I think it was placed when the establishment was open. It's still there. It's probably been there well over two years. But I think this is not a good move for the city in terms of.
Mr. Lewis, is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Next ordinance, two thousand fifteen dash zero five. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, this is ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero five. It's an ordinance of the city of Medea Beach, Florida relating to a referendum vote of electors for a vacation of rights of way, deleting the referendum requirement in section one twelve dash ninety-three, deleting section one twelve dash ninety-four regarding decision of the electors, renumbering sections one twelve dash ninety-five and one twelve dash ninety-six, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero five by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance two zero five, excuse me, two zero one five dash seven five.
I second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Just want to say, I've received some calls on it, on, on doing this, and, you know, it's not like we're selling dirt. This commission's not selling dirt. We are just putting it out for a vote, and the majority of the citizens of Medea Beach will make that decision whether we can sell dirt or not. And so, you know, there's been a couple of angry calls and saying that we're circumventing the rules, and we're not. Again, this is just putting it on, on the ballot to see if, if the city can move forward, because as Tom has reiterated and City Manager has said, this, this is a, you know, it's an old, it's an old law. It's been on the books for a while. And I think that moving forward with a, with a progressive city that we've become, we need, we need to have more flexibility, and this just gives us a bit more flexibility. Now, again, I understand what some of the people have said. We've had some bad commissions in the past, and we've had some bad city managers. So that, you know, that could happen to come again, but, you know, this, this, this is not going to hurt the city of Medea Beach. I guarantee this, this. And I'm not going to be an ad, or, you know, for against it right now, but I'm just saying that, that this is, just putting it out there so that citizens can vote on.
Right. Commissioner Lewis, your thing?
Can I just make, clear this up there? Two different ordinances that you're considering today. This first ordinance is basically only dealing with rights of way, and what it's basically saying, if you want to vacate a rights of way that you don't have to go through a referendum vote, that's what we're taking out of the language out of the code. The next order, which I'm about to read, is the ordinance where Commissioner Lister is talking about the sale of dirt. And I just wanted to make that clear so everybody was under the same understanding, that there are two ordinances here. One is dealing with revising the charter. That's the one we're going to read next. This one is with regard only rights of way, and it is only the code provisions. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager, staff recommendation?
Well, it's certainly for, our recommendation is for approval, but your, Mr. Mayor, if I could just walk you through this, at least from the seat that I sit in. We had a possibility of a major development that's now going to occur in John's Pass. I think everybody's familiar with that project. But it could have been delayed a year because we needed to possibly vacate what Tom's talking about, an alleyway that's in, help me with the vernacular here today. It's a.
It's a, it's a right of way.
Right of way, but so, so we would have been, we've worked around that one. I think what people are saying is, you know, Crawford's going to the board and wants to sell John's Pass Park. That's not what this is about. You know, you, you look at the property that you own, and I think I came to you very early in my tenure, saying you don't own a lot of property in town. Maybe we should start buying some stuff up. You know, you've got a couple of, we've got the store down in John's Pass. We've got John's Pass Park. But then you've got Archwell Park that you're completely restricted to and pretty much can't do anything with except for what we're doing. Same thing with the Marina. What this really comes down to is having the tools in your hands to be able to snap on a development that is going to fall in your lap. And they've been falling in our laps. We get a lot of credit for everything going on in town. It hasn't been hard work. They're coming to us, you know? This is, this is the time to receive. We've been the brunt of the joke for quite some time. So I think that this is something that you need now when it goes, when the argument to be made is, well, you're taking the power away from the people. People voted you guys in here to make some pretty tough damn decisions. That's, that's where the, where it rests. And so, yeah, I understand that there's been some bad commissions and bad city managers, and we might get deemed with those titles someday too, but at the end of the day, you vote the electorate in to do what they've got to do. So I, I don't, I don't see a problem with this. You know, this is a political ideology. You know, you have to come to rest within your own inner being or whatever, but I think that this is something. I haven't heard it, the criticisms. I've talked to a couple of you yesterday. I think some phone calls were probably made yesterday from, from some constituents. But at the end of the day, I think, look at this town. They're, they're pretty happy with you all. So we've got to be able to move on some of this stuff fast, and otherwise, we've got to wait a year for a referendum, so. And at the end of the day, you're not making the decision to make this tonight. You're making the decision to allow the public to make the decision. So, there you go.
Thank you, City Manager. Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Next ordinance, two thousand fifteen dash zero six. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Okay, this is the other ordinance I was just mentioning. This is the one that would change the city charter after a referendum vote. I'll read it by title only. Twenty fifteen dash zero six, an ordinance of the city of Medea Beach, Florida, amending section one point seven of the charter to require a four-fifths vote by the commission for the sale or conveyance of real property possessed by the city and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero six by title only.
And at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that this commission pass ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero six.
I'm second that motion.
Motion is made in seconded, and Commissioner Lister, just to go back on what you were talking about on this ordinance here, is we're given the right to the people to make the decision. And then once, even if the, as the city manager said, and I've got a few phone calls on, if something of bad commissions in the past, it's going to have to be a pretty strong commission city that can pass anything to do this, so, I mean, it's, it looks like the right way to go. Let the people make the choice. Do they want to see the city move forward? Do they want to stay a progressive city? We put it into the hands of voters in the city of Medea Beach. So that's my say on that.
Well, and that was yesterday, what happened then. That was yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, everybody has a right to their own feeling, and like I said some time ago, this is my opinion, but that's not shared by all, that the city of Medea Beach needs to step up to the plate, people that are elected here as the commissioners of this town, and push for this. Now, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. These sorts of things aren't so easy sometimes. As we build our way along, we'll find out what kind of work we're going to have to do. And that, you know, we'll, we'll find out what you hear. Now, no one's called me, I mean, had one tweet from anybody. Only from another city who complimented us on what they was reading in the paper and was wishing, hoping, and praying that their commission would stand up for what they believe in, like that, which they don't. So I thought that was pretty nice. They were very, very complimentary about what we were doing. And I said, well, all I can ever tell you is my opinion. We're elected to do a job. You better have enough nerve to do it. Or else that'll be a question. Walk away.
Thank you, Commissioner Schatz. And once again, I think the city has, you're right, we have a task in front of us. The city manager has mentioned about putting on some informational workshops. Even if there is a group that's opposed to this, I mean, I would even be open to the pros and cons on this, so everybody knows what it's exactly about, but it's going to have to be on education.
Yeah. Because not in a town, not in a place, I did what we're talking about.
Thank you, ma'am. Adam Hares, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we'll hold a minimum two, probably more than that, like almost educational-type seminars or town hall meeting meetings to, you know, get this out.
Well, thank you. Mr. City Manager, staff, staff recommendation on this?
Approval, sir.
Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges? Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
All right, next ordinance, two thousand fifteen dash zero seven. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero seven, an ordinance of the city of Medea Beach, Florida, amending section fourteen dash one thirty point two of the code of ordinances to amend the definition of residential rental unit and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero seven by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance two oh one five dash zero seven.
I'll second it.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Mr. City Manager, staff recommendation?
Approval, sir.
Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Next resolution, two thousand fifteen dash eleven. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash eleven, a resolution of the city of Medea Beach, Florida, accepting the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, and providing for an effective date. That was reading of resolution two thousand fifteen dash eleven.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution twenty fifteen eleven be adopted on the fourth day and only reading.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Mr. City Manager, staff recommendation?
Approval. Vince is here for a short presentation.
Presentation. I have to, excuse me, with my hands full. I was hoping to have it on the TV, but that didn't quite work out, so I'll try to keep this short. So the action I'm requesting on the CAFER, which I don't know if you have, I was hoping to have that, like I said, on the TV, but you've at least received the bound document at this point. So the requested action is to accept the CAFER, which is not something the commission has done in the past few years, but, but is something that's consistent with best practices and something that should be done every year. It, what the CAFER does is it provides the commission the opportunity to review the city's net position, which is similar to equity in the private sector, and address the city's ability to meet outstanding obligation, to meet obligations both now and in the future. It's a little bit different from the annual budget process, which is much more focused on a narrower scope of just balancing revenues and expenditures. I can tell you that the auditors, as of April twenty-ninth, issued an unqualified opinion that the financial statements are presented fairly, which is the most basic, clean opinion that the auditor can issue. It's been submitted to the GFOA for the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Typically, the auditors will be the ones here presenting this, but the city is currently in between auditors. We've had the same auditors for the past five years. They were originally brought on in fiscal year two thousand ten. I can tell you that we expanded the scope of their services a couple of years ago to include an IT control assessment. If you remember that, there were something like twenty-some findings that they had, and all of those findings have, have been resolved now. Those were outstanding for a couple of years, but those have all been addressed, so that's good news. They did have one finding for the current period, which is on page eighty of this document, if you have it. It was specific, it was, it's called a significant deficiency, and it was specific to the city's use of its financial software. In my opinion, you know, staff and the auditors don't always necessarily have to agree. It's more of a, to me, it's, it was more of a miscommunication issue between the city and the auditors. But in any case, the city never denied the, the issue that they brought up, which was essentially that the city's financial software can, it can be ran in a way that excludes certain activity, and it's, it's more a clerical error when that happens, but it can happen. In any case, I've addressed that. Uh, in any case, I've addressed that by, uh, planning a software upgrade, and, uh, the new software will, uh, ensure that that, es- essentially a glitch, uh, will not be able to, to occur once that, uh, upgrade has been made. So with that said, I just, I wanna make a couple of brief comments on the actual financial statements, uh, and alter to them, so I can, uh, look at them myself, but, uh, when you're home and, uh, trying to get some sleep tonight, you can take a look at page, uh, seventeen and eighteen. This is what's called the, uh, the government-wide, the city-wide, uh, statement of net position. Um, this inclu- now, there's a little bit of a different treatment between the government-wide financial statements and the fund-level statements. But on a government-wide basis, uh, we include all assets and all liabilities. It's called the economic resources focus of measurement. Um, and I can tell you that from year to year, uh, total assets of the city are up twenty-one percent. That is a result of issuing debt and fin- and, and, uh, constructing new assets with that debt. Total liabilities, which, uh, Commissioner Lister was, uh, caught by this number, just give it, he's doing his reading. Uh, total liabilities are up seven hundred and thirteen percent, uh, which i- is the corresponding debt service obligation related to the new assets. Um, last year, the, last year, and for the, each of the past thirty-some years, the city had no outstanding liabilities, so that's why that amount, uh, is such a significant increase. Uh, and between those two movements, net position ultimately increased by three point two percent. Uh, to me, the more interesting, uh, the more interesting story behind the statements is at the fund level. Uh, and if you just think back to the last couple, or think back to the budget, uh, we inherited it a couple of years ago, um, we, we've made some drastic reductions to the budget. We have, we started and eliminated, uh, a capital projects fund. We deleted a vehicle replacement fund. We transferred the parking fund to Johns Pass Village Fund to the general fund. We started the Archibald Fund. Um, all of those are illustrated somewhere in the M D N A here. I have a little diagram that kinda maps that out, but, uh, in any case, those are the changes that we made. And the net results, uh, again, it's page ten is a good place to look for this. That's where I have the little chart that kinda shows how we consolidate a couple of funds. Um, but what it also shows is that we are now running just three enterprise funds. Previously, there was five. And part of the reason I, I had advocated for that was because two of the five in the past, they weren't true enterprise funds. They were essentially just, uh, restricting the, the city's ability to use its, its resources. So the three that we're currently running now, sanitation, stormwater, and Marina, those are all, they're all operating, uh, exactly as you would expect an enterprise fund to operate, which is that they're operating on a break-even basis. Uh, sanitation fund and Marina fund each operated, uh, with, uh, with operating income of, I think, five percent or less of expenditures, which is right about where you would expect an enterprise fund to be. The stormwater fund, uh, expenses did exceed revenues this year, but that was planned. I mean, we, uh, we knew that was gonna happen based on all the extensive streets and stormwater work we're doing. The city commission, uh, approved a rate increase to address that issue. Uh, so in my opinion, in terms of our enterprise funds, I don't really have any, uh, major concerns about, uh, the sustainability of those funds at this point. We also have two special revenue funds, uh, the local auction sales tax fund, which is, uh, the penny for Pinellas. We're making a, the city's making a concerted effort to, to draw down funds in the local auction sales tax fund, uh, which is fine. I mean, that's, that's perfectly reasonable. There's no need to, uh, to run that fund, uh, at a balance every year. Those funds exist to be used for capital improvements, and that's exactly what we're doing. The Archibald Fund, uh, is essentially an allocation of parks and rec expenditures, and, uh, we're basically maximizing that for, for the full intent of those funds. Uh, we had a, a total found, fund balance increase of, of thirty thousand dollars in the Archibald Fund, uh, which is, quite frankly, right, right where we should be. And, uh, we can continue to use that fund for parks and recs, uh, related expenditures. Um, the bottom line of, of all these movements is that, is that we've removed what, what I viewed as, uh, undue restrictions on spending. You know, the more, the more funds you have, uh, inherently, you're going to res- restrict spending, and some of those funds were, were not necessary, in my opinion. Um, but that also creates some, some difficulties too. So, like I said, we, we are drawing down what's called restricted fund balance. Um, we're also drawing down unassigned balance, which is, which represents the most, uh, liquid, the most available resources that the city has. Uh, we're putting those into service, so it's not like, uh, the city is, uh, necessarily, uh, spending those in any, any kind of, uh, incorrect or, or unreasonable way, but if you look at page twelve, uh, if this is a picture I could burn into everyone's mind, uh, that'd be a good way to walk away from this. But, uh, basically what the, the image on, the graph on page twelve shows is that, um, the operating, the general fund operating budget is going up every year, and general fund unassigned balance is going down every year. So, just looking at those two variables and not considering the revenue factor, that's not a sustainable trend. Um, at some point, i- it's okay to draw down balance, and it's okay to put it into all these capital projects and new services, but at some point, we need policies, procedures that say it's okay to draw it down to this level, or it's okay to use fund balance for this and this, but not this, or, uh, you know, it's okay to use fund balance for non-recurring expenditures, but for ongoing expenditures, you need to find recurring revenue sources. Those are just some of the, um, some of the types of analysis that we should be doing at a certain point, because, like this graph shows, the, the long-term, uh, path i- is unsustainable absent those policies. So just tying everything together, um, in a couple of weeks, I'm going to be, uh, presenting, I won't be presenting any policies, but I'll be at least introducing some of those policies to you that I mentioned a couple of months ago. Uh, I'll have a financial advisor, uh, at the meeting, and we'll, we'll at least start the process of getting those policies and procedures in place. And, uh, essentially, that will address, uh, you know, not just what we're trying to do now, but also just, you know, creating some long se- long-term, uh, sustainability. Uh, so that'll be scheduled for, I think it's the, maybe twenty-sixth, uh, workshop, and we'll be addressing some of those concerns, so. I know I went quick, and I, it's not very, uh, easy to, to look at everything if you don't have it already printed on the screen, but if you have any questions now or later, let me know.
Thank you, Vince. Does anybody have any questions for Vince right now, from the finance director?
No, just wanted to show you, this is last year's report, and this is this year's report. It's two and a half times thick. So you're doing two and a half times the work.
And it should make a head count.
It was a lot of work, it was a lot of work.
It was a lot of work.
But that's because, I mean, in my opinion, and, and this is, uh, we have a lot of long, a lot of issues here. We got the auditors issue, we got the financial advisor issue, policies, whatnot, whatnot, but, uh, it's because the city is doing things financially that, uh, necessarily, not necessarily haven't, uh, done in a long time, so.
So how do we go about the auditors? How did we hire new auditors?
I have an RFP advertised right now, and, uh, I'll get those responses in by the end of the month, and.
We'd actually like to include the board in on that, have a member of the board sit in and evaluate, 'cause it won't be a bid process, it'll be a qualification process, because we're, like Vince said, we're, uh, not doing it bigger and better, but certainly differently than we had in the past, and so if we, we need to get the right group in here to work with us on everything that we're doing now.
Well, I'm not making a mission, Commissioner Lister, 'cause as Commissioner Lister, you have been seeing these budgets, I've forgotten any of them. You've seen this a lot more than the most, majority of us, so.
You're spending more money now than we used to in life.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a great presentation, which I give out.
Thank you.
I haven't finished it up, but I've been reading it.
I'm, I'm really excited to get, go to Johns Pass Fund, and, and, and the partner that goes in the, in particular, was a good move. We've been trying to use Johns Pass Fund for a while, several years now. Thanks for just taking care of that.
Made it happen.
But I would, yeah, I'd love to sit in, in, you know, help with that.
Vince has got a rough job, you know, he goes from the CAFER and the audit right into budget, and then when that budget's over, he basically goes into the CAFER and audit process. Starts it all over again, you know, Dave's got the, the tourist season out there, and that season's not fun for him, and Vince is somewhat cyclical too, so we're just jumping into budget now, but after seeing what he went through with these auditors, though, I, I, I spoke to y'all about that, and it's, it's just, it was time for a change, so. Thank you.
You got it.
Is there any additional comment? Would say clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Uh, next resolution two thousand fifteen dash twelve, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mayor Commissioners, resolution two thousand fifteen dash twelve, a resolution of the City of Madera Beach, Florida, requesting that the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners explore amending the Pinellas County Emergency Medical Services ALS First Responder Agreement to provide emergency medical services funding to assist the agencies that provide first responder emergency medical services via water rescue vehicles and providing for an effective date. That was written in resolution two thousand fifteen dash twelve by title only.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to pass resolution two zero one five dash one two.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, and, uh, if you have to say on this, actually, some things have happened since we've talked about this. The county, uh, at the EMS level is gonna present to the county board of commissioners to, uh, appropriate eight hundred thousand dollars of EMS dollars for fire rescue equipment and manpower to be spread out around the county, so that's a start. So, I want to thank y'all very much for also, um, considering to, uh, support this resolution, and it's nice to see the county's kinda taking it as what everybody's been talking about lately. And Mr. City Manager staff recommendation on this?
Approval, sir.
Is there any further comment? Would say clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Next resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mayor's, Mayor Commissioners, resolution twenty fifteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the City of Madera Beach, Florida, amending the budget by increasing general fund expenditures in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars for law enforcement services and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen by title only.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that this commission pass the resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen.
A motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
This is for the office, right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, maybe if I can have the floor, a couple of things. First, uh, um, this number of thirty-three thousand may decrease by eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, depending on how fast the sheriff's department can get me a deputy. If I can't get him until July, that would change, so I'm pushing for June, 'cause I wanna get going on this. Um, but just so, you know, for total transparency sake, that, that might be the case. Secondly, and it was a comment that the gentleman made during public comment, is, you know, he said, well, we've been giving amnesty on first offenses. That is true and not true. Um, eh, not to cry in my Cheerios, but you guys do give me a whole hell of a lot to manage, and with one guy, it wasn't really easy to do all of this. And so what we were doing was giving people who we honestly thought came in and said, I had no idea I was breaking the law, because you guys haven't been enforcing this in nine years, the ability to just finish out some of those contracts, people that had put down deposits instead of undoing all that. The ones that we knew were aggressively breaking the law, we, we handled in another fashion. But that whole timeframe has kinda gone out the window now. You know, we, we had another one today that I kinda handled with kid gloves, but we had a little egg on our face again as an organization. When I, when we go in front of the magistrate and we wanna handle these, I wanna know that we're going in there prepared and we're gonna win. And, and we haven't had some very clean-cut cases before, only because this is just one of the code things that we manage. This is going to take a full-time position, and the, the way that we're doing it is absolutely the correct way. It's the most expensive way, but it's the right way. So I appreciate your flexibility or your, uh, allowing me to do this. If you want me to do it, to do it the right way. And so, um, this just gets us to, through this budget year. I didn't wanna wait until October. I, you know, I had a conversation with the vice mayor, and it's like, if we're gonna do this, let's rock this thing out, let's get going. Um, and then I'll build into the budget the, the money for the next deputy. That being said, you guys wanna do a lot of stuff and leave that millage rate alone. So remember this meeting, remember these instances where we add six figures to the budget, and we don't want to adjust taxes, so that's my little soapbox comment to the thing.
Thank you, Mr. City.
I'd like to make one comment also. The only calls I get this weekend was on the article. And Sunday night, I had dinner with eight residents from a beach to the north of us, wanting to know how we accomplished what we'd accomplished so far, and how in the world we can get another deputy in here to get it under control. They were literally pulling their hair out. And we, I know that I'm probably the most vocal person in Pinellas County on this, and I continue to be. So, I just want you to know that we are being looked at closely by other communities, and I will probably meet with these eight people again and their city manager to see if we cannot get them on the same track. This is like the chronic nuisance property ordinance. I said it in the very beginning. In order to make this work, we have to adopt it from city to city. Otherwise, all we do is running them back and forth, and I think a few people are beginning to catch on to that fact. And it's gonna be pretty much with the same with the short-term rentals. We will all eventually get on board.
We can only hope that the others can get on board, and the Realtors get on board, and a few of the other organizations that are.
I did have another phone call today from another, uh, writer in Tampa that would like to do another article on it, and I'm really, really expressing my disdain over the Rental Association.
Well, I, I mean, let's face it, the Realtors and the rentals, so they're never gonna buy into this, right? So, but we can at least clean out Madera Beach and set an example. I mean, we've been trendsetters before, and we're gonna do it again, and so I think this is, this is all good. But again, doing this for the reasons, that's, that's half of it, but then being able to afford it midstream is something else. And so remember, from a financial situation, you guys would love to have this flexibility to throw something like this at me at the middle of the year. Some cities couldn't even make this transfer, because they don't have the money in the bank. So we wanna keep that financial flexibility throughout the year, and so just remember that when it comes to budget time. Now, I'm not telling you we're gonna raise the millage rate. I don't know, I don't have any of my numbers, we don't know what the property assessments are gonna be, but remember this feeling, because you don't want that feeling to ever go away, where you wanna tackle something in the middle of the year, and there's nowhere to go. That, that well needs to be cool.
Thank you, Mr. City. Is there any further comment? Would say clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Next, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for authorization for change orders to Pinellas County Sheriff's Office contract.
I'll submerge, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
The only problem that I've got is that it says July one, and it might be possibly June one, so we should probably amend that. It says, um, eh, yeah, effectively of July first, two thousand fifteen. In all probability, that might be the date, but I was told by the sheriff's department, depending on how their posting goes, I might be able to give them sooner, so. Tom, if that's a stickling pointer, 'cause the money we approved gets, allows me the flexibility to get them sooner. In fact, it says June through September, uh, two thousand fifteen in resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen.
Well, the money comes into play here, so when you're talking about par- page twelve, paragraph seventeen of the contract, that would change. They've got, they've got this current contract going through the end of June, so the new deputy is under this contract coming in as of July one.
Correct.
So if you need to do a further amendment, then this language would change, and, uh.
Can we administratively just change that, or, I mean, I, I just don't wanna have to, a technicality hold me up for thirty days, because we're putting June first, or July first in here, and I can actually get them thirty days sooner.
Um, well, we need to come to an agreement as to the dollar amount with the sheriff. If you wanna give the authority to enter into this agreement with a modification for the additional month, you can do it that way. You're not necessarily approving the contract, and you're approving it contingent upon the city manager.
That's what we got. The thirty-three, the thirty-three thousand dollars covers us through, from June through September.
Doesn't the city manager, could you use the city manager's authority for fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could assert that.
I mean, so if you go that way, that way, there's no issues, and go ahead and, and, and pass this as written, or it can.
Well, you're, you're gonna be signing a contract.
That's right. That's the issue, is the signing of the contract. So do you wanna give him authority then to, you know, to sign the contract and give the mayor the authority to sign the contract providing for the deputy starting June one versus July thirtieth? That's really what the motion would be.
Yeah, it was monthly number, maybe you could just put a monthly number.
It is. It's eighty-two fifty a month, wasn't it, Vince?
Yeah, the, the fund, my recommendation would be just leave the funding amount as is, and then whatever you need to do on the, on the contract date, you would have the funding available.
I mean, can they give me the authority somehow, Tom, to just have the start date, either be June first or July first, based off of what I can get done with the sheriff's department?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They give you the authority and the mayor to sign the agreement, once that change has been made.
So the motion needs to be amended?
Yes. Right now, it's just to approve it as written.
Okay, so we'll amend the motion to say added effectively on June first, two thousand fifteen.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Uh, Mr. City Manager, staff's recommendation?
We're gonna get this done, this is the way to go, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further discussion?
Is Jeff willing to pick a deputy?
I'd love to discuss that with you after the meeting, Mr. Lister, if that's all right. We've made a recommendation.
The City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next Resolution two thousand fifteen dash fourteen, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash fourteen, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida amending the city of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners' policy handbook to provide that the city manager can determine the need for both regular and workshop meetings, a DAS log review be added to the agenda order of business. The notice for meetings will no longer be posted at Winn-Dixie Publix and John's Pass and providing an effective date. That was written in Resolution two thousand fifteen dash fourteen by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass Resolution two zero one five dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion is made, seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Yes, I'd like to say second. I had a resident say that they, they really depend on when they go to Publix and they see the notice is there. Some people don't have their computers. Um, how often they go to the city, the city hall or to the library, I'm not sure. But they thought that taking it away from, the notice away from Publix or Winn-Dixie is not a good choice.
Mr. Mayor, my only comment was that, that first word there was kind of thrown in there late, and it was actually a suggestion of a commissioner about, we've, we've had a series of meetings where we met for fourteen minutes, and there are some times where, you know, it could be postponed or doubled up on a workshop day or a BOC day. Um, I'm certainly not looking for the authority or to control when you guys meet, but I think you, you've become much more sophisticated as an organization and to meet for the sake of meeting, which a lot of cities do, but you're, you're probably not in that filter. And in fact, the, the amount of meetings that we would cancel, we'd probably make up for with special meetings and that type of thing. So, um, what, what you're basically saying here is, I would have the authority to do that. Now you all know me, I'd probably contact each one of you individually and just let you know and see what you all thought. But I mean, we have so much going on that on the days that we can get away without having a meeting, staff can catch up, you guys can take a break, and let's face it, we'll probably have you in for three special meetings that month anyway. So that's the reason why it's thrown in there. But if you're not comfortable with that, feel free to break out the red pen.
Is there any further comment? Staff recommendation? Was that was your recommendation?
That's the recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
That's got to wish you. The City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Lister?
Yep.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes.
Next Resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifteen, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifteen, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida amending the budget by increasing local option sales tax fund expenditures in the amount of forty thousand dollars for dock replacement and providing for an effective date. That was reading Resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifteen by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifteen be adopted on first and final reading.
Uh, motion is made, seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can just explain this one to you quick. At the last meeting, I explained to you that I felt, at least from an administrative standpoint, it was important for Madeira Beach to take the lead on this water taxi idea. In thirty-one days, we're going to have four nationally known bands playing in your backyard on a band show that's set to be built, and we have no idea how we're going to get them here. While the idea came to me, instead of building, you know, a seven-figure or eight-figure parking garage, we have the ability to park six hundred cars or more at the school days out there. If I'm, Dave, if I'm saying anything wrong, come on in here and tell me to shut up. But, uh, to, to cart them over on a boat versus loading them up in a bus, and we're going to do the bus thing too, makes a lot of sense. So we had worked with the school, Doug Spielert, being the friend of the city that he is, worked with them on remodeling their dock. The principal, and Mr. Mayor, you can help me out with this, hopefully isn't exactly, uh, keen on us using that dock for liability reasons. I, I, I have an issue with that because we can insure it. I'm exposed for two and a half miles in a mile wide throughout the city, you know, to ensure a dock for loading people is not going to jump our insurance costs that significantly. But we can load them up there. We're going to load them up on the beach down there at Bicentennial Park, where the, we call it the dock park. And we're going to cart them over here on boat while we don't have a drop-off dock over here. So we need a, uh, we have a set of fire docks over here. Uh, I think we have a change order, a piggyback contract that we can get done, and this can get done within thirty days. So this is the first step to the city saying, we're embracing the water taxi idea, and we'll have the jolly trolleys and the buses and all those things running at the same time. But these concert doors, you're going to have another seven thousand people in town running all over the place spending money. It's not a bad deal. But it's been a lot of work on behalf of Doug Andrews and Dave Marsakano. I mean, the, the logistics of pulling off a concert like this is ridiculous. And so we're, with everything that we got going on, now we're going to be concert promoters or whatever too. So anyway, I just wanted to make that very apparent. Wayne made a, wrote an article about it in the paper, and I thought it was very well done, that we're going to take the lead on this too, and we're going to figure out a way to get it done. And so off we go on another adventure.
I think the first concert's going to be a real learning experience.
Oh, well, I haven't slept since they announced it, so we'll see what happens. But, uh, that's what Dave keeps saying, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll learn as we go. But the logistics of throwing one of these things from just closing down the road to having the right gates, to having the right, you know, security to, I can't tell you how involved this stuff gets. And the worst thing that could happen is if somebody doesn't, if they don't go on, you know. So now you've got seven thousand people in the field, and they're a little sour. So, uh, and right.
Right there, brother.
Well, they play, they're, they're crazy enough to watch it in the rain. But, uh, you know, to, to have four major bands like that book on a venue that's not really been built yet is something I've never experienced before, but we'll see. So we've got a month to make it happen. And so if we could just keep any new ideas under wraps for thirty-one days, that'd be great.
You said that last week.
I know, I know.
He's trying to tell us something.
Right, I'm trying, I'm dropping these subtle hints, but you guys aren't picking up on them.
Just going right over our head.
All right, is there any further comment?
Well, it's good money spent anyway. We need a dock out there.
Need a dock.
It's going to be good. And, and we can even show people from John's Pass, you know, on, on, on different occasions, not, not the concert, but on different occasions, we would show people anywhere from to, to that dock. So it's, it's money well spent.
Oh, you're going to use it all the time?
Exactly.
Yep, yeah, from, uh, from your fishing tournaments to...
It's not specifically for the concert, is what I'm saying.
No, 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 it's for everything.
It can be used for multiple things.
Softball tournaments.
Exactly. Also the fire dock. It's a fire dock.
And it's a fire dock, yes.
And the two jet skis will be...
Multifunctional dock.
So we can use the kind of money for that.
Fine, I'll tell you things. All right, the City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Next, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for authorization to approve expenditures exceeding fifteen thousand dollars.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion is made, seconded. Is there any discussion?
That's what we just talked about.
Yep.
The forty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Not to exceed. Hopefully bring it in under.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? The City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Mr. Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz? Mr. Hodges?
All right, next, reports of correspondence. Uh, I know that the city received a letter from a visitor, and I actually asked, uh, the past mayor and city commissioner for District Four, Pat Schatz, to read this letter because, number one, she was the chair of the nine-eleven memorial. And, uh, Pat, if you don't mind.
My thank you. Uh, this letter from nine-eleven, first responder. The letter was submitted to the city website about the city of Madeira Beach nine-eleven memorial. And the letter was sent by Captain Malcolm Dean, who, and this is what he had to say. This letter was dated May twelfth, two thousand fifteen to Mayor Palladino, Vice Mayor Poe, Commissioner Lister, Commissioner Hodges, Commissioner Schatz, Amy, Savio, City Clerk. Subject comment left on the website. Hello, Board of Commissioners. The following message was sent by our website comment box from Malcolm Dean Junior, who lives in Stony Point, New York. To whom it may concern, my name is Malcolm Dean Junior, and I'm a paramedic who worked for the, something, Fire Department of New York and responded to nine-eleven. My brother William Thomas Dean was killed that day. He was a VP for Marsh and McLennan, and his office was on the hundred and first floor of the North Tower of the World Trade Center. My wife and I were recently in the North Reading to the Madeira Beach area and stopped at the nine-eleven memorial in the vicinity of the causeway. I have visited all the official nine-eleven memorials, as well as many smaller ones throughout the United States. Your memorial brought me to tears. It was moving, respectfully done, and in my opinion, captured the sentiments of the families in the event. Thank you for providing a spot where family members, responders, and the public can reflect on the events of that day and pay respects to all the lives lost and help to continue the very difficult healing process. As a responder, family member, and survivor of those tragic events, the site is a very powerful and amazing tribute to those lost while providing a solace to those who remain. Is there anything I can do to fill in any blanks? Please feel free to contact me. Thank you to all involved, Captain Malcolm Dean Junior, V.S. Licensed Paramedics, Stanford, and Emergency Medical Services.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. And, and Pat, if you would please, would you get, make sure a copy of that gets to all the past, uh, members of the, uh, nine-eleven?
My committee.
I feel well.
And, uh, and also Dee, please. It Dee, uh, Dewey's.
Dewey's wife, oh, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other correspondence from any other commissioners?
Actually, not so much correspondence, but Dave and I would like to give everybody an update on something that we put a team together about, what, a year ago, Shane?
At least, yeah.
Shane and Dave, Sergeant Moat with the church unit, Deputy Luckett, and Steve Tarton and myself to work on cleaning up our waterways. So it's been a long, hard road, but we've made some progress. Um, I'm going to let Dave fill you in on the biggest progress that we've made within county. See if you can say the words and I can't.
Well...
Subaquous.
Yeah. Um, all throughout, not all throughout the city, but in a few different spots throughout the city, we have subaquous sewer lines that are, I have said it before in the meeting, as compared to the old, uh, pipes that are in the ground for gas up north and hear about, you know, those rupturing. Well, all these sewer pipes are fifty-six years old, same, fifty to sixty years old, same as the gas line. That's why we sold it. Well, those subaquous pipes, we think have been contributing possibly to our issues with contaminated waters. So the good news is the county is going to be replacing the subaquous main pipe between the big pump station out in front of the marina, uh, going underneath, um, uh, the intercoastal right there, and then it's going to, uh, run across and up Denny Road. So that's a big deal for us. I mean, that's, uh, you know, why we hope that those pipes aren't leaking. There's, that pipe is over fifty years old because you can't really get a solid answer how old it is. And the pipes are continuously getting looked at throughout the city. Um, unfortunately, that pump station's not going to go away, so we'll have that smell there. But the, uh, the pipes are, uh, are getting replaced. Um, and the county is, is really working with us now to get this stuff done.
And they are. So is FWC, and so is DEP. Uh, FWC is actually, for all of you that don't know it, we do not own the water where those boats are anchored. The school owns part of it, uh, the state owns part of it, and the VA owns it. The only thing that we get from this is their residue that travels into our fates. So when I explain that to DEP, well, it's true.
And it's not just, and I don't mean to interrupt, but it's not just the waste that we're talking about here. Because you have those boats there, they all have bilges, they all have oil. You guys know this. There's, so it's not just the, the fetal stuff we're talking about is...
With everything, whatever they throw overboard, we get. Uh, but the nice part about it is FWC and the marine unit are working together. They are boarding the boats, they're monitoring them. They've given some citations for not having the proper sanitation equipment. And they're actually saying, we don't have as many live boards out there as we thought we had. There are a lot of them that are just abandoned there because they can't afford marina. So that's one of the other things that we're finding out. But I think all in all, with the last year, we've made some great progress. Believe it or not, I started at the county level. They told me to go away. So then I went to Tallahassee to FWC and DEP. So between the three of us, we ended up back at the county. So, so now we're finally getting some results. So in September, October, we can retest our waters and hopefully see a big improvement. A couple of things though, too, I'd like to bring out, too. We're going to be putting dock stations, more dock stations around, and there's a reason for this. One of the things that DEP did with me was they did what they called the whippet. It's a walkabout. And you figure out what is contributing to the pollution in your waters. It can be the dock waste that flows down the drains, which we have a lot of irresponsible dogs out there that just don't pick up their own boo-boo. So we're working on getting more dock stations throughout the city. Uh, the other thing is gutters. You never think much about your gutters. But if you've got them running so they run over the seawall, every time it rains, you're polluting the water. So there are a lot of different things that residents can do and we can do to, to avoid some of the pollution.
Anything that goes onto the sidewalks, anything that goes out is eventually going into our bank.
You know, well...
That we all recreate and enjoy, if you want to keep it clean.
You know, there's so many landmark companies. There must be four different ones on our street. And they blow that stuff right out in the street, and I get so mad. First of all, because they blow it all over the house. You know, they blow, they blow it all over your windowsills and in your garage and, and they blow it all up in the street. Why, why isn't there something that you can bring those people to be, to be aware of what they're doing?
Well, Mr. Schatz, uh, they gave me a badge, and, uh, so call me next time, and I can actually come out there and talk to them. A stormwater badge.
How good, do you...
You see that kind of stuff going on, reach out to volunteer desk or Megan in my office, and she'll get ahold of Kenny, me, and, uh, the other Kenny. Uh, all three of us are state stormwater inspectors. And if you see that kind of stuff going on, grab us, because we'll go out there and give them an education.
Then they need one, because they don't even know what a cotton picking broom is. Where's your broom? Where's your push broom? How about loan to me your push broom?
David, and that's a good point, you know, bringing up stuff to leaves in your gutters. Is the, is, did the king of stuff like that going down the stormwater really bringing up the alimony numbers that high in our waters?
It adds.
It adds. Everything, that's what the wind is all about. Everything adds up to pollution.
So anything, and, and you'll start to see as residents and commissioners, you'll see more. We're going to try to do, Shane was saying today, that we're going to try to do more outreach, try to get some more, um, in the local newspaper. I think we're going to try to get some stuff, but education. You know, if your neighbor's blowing all the stuff down the stormwater pipe, that's the neighbor that's going to be mad when it clogs up because when the next rain comes. So you just, you know, maybe educate your neighbors. Not everybody wants to listen. And if you see something going on, reach out to us and let us know. Contractors pouring concrete down the drain, washing out their, washing out the flume from the concrete truck into the concrete drains is a major problem. You know, we did the stormwater pipes, half of what we did, you know, was cleaning up that kind of stuff. So we can talk forever, but Amy will shoot me if I do, so.
But we're very proud of the, of the achievements we've made in the last, probably the last four months that came together.
And, and you are the only, uh, commission that's really gone after this actively, you know, and, and out of all the municipalities to spend the amount of money y'all did on water testing and really... Well, it's never good when they shut your beaches down. That's a real black eye.
Yes.
And we're trying to be ahead of that for sure. What about the abandoned boats? Whose responsibility, since we don't own that water, is it for them to remove the abandoned boats?
FWC.
I don't see, wasn't it, uh...
It's FWC and the county. It used to be Cole Elko did that.
To remove any abandoned boats.
Right.
And we have a new bill out now, too, that says that at-risk boats...
Right.
As opposed to just generally, if they look like they're at risk, they can be removed.
And, and what's the criteria for abandonment? Are they gone for ten days? Are they gone for, did we, I don't know, I don't know what's abandoned. I don't know their exact criteria for that. I don't know their exact criteria for that.
I don't know. But I can get an answer.
And when it starts falling apart, it's already too late.
Right, and they don't have registration. It's what they, they go to the registered owner, you know? Try to find them, try to make them responsible. They're not, it's a ban. Depending on where it is, uh, the one guy that left it in Bay Pine is felony dumping, so.
The one in Hurricane Hollow, they cleaned that up, you mean?
Yep. I would turn out to be felony dumping there, so. It, I, I don't know the exact criteria of what it is, but, um-
So, one last thing, do we have any, uh, pull on boats behind houses?
They're working on that and they're actually going up and down the canals and trying to find people that are actually physically living on the boat and getting a mop of it.
Now, that would be, uh, so we can, we can do that, right?
We can do that.
That's code violation.
Um, I think Deputy Cracker has done a couple of those.
That's what I need, one more thing.
I was just gonna say, I just add that on the list.
Yeah, it was very hard for them to get those guys to, you know?
They heard their name.
Because they're, they're living on their boat, but they're paying rent to somebody.
Oh, yeah.
And I know a few people have done that. Yeah, they live.
And did you report them as a resident?
Well, of course.
Okay, good boy.
Quick.
I love it when I get calls at nine or ten o'clock at night and I say, well, okay, call the police. Oh, no, I don't wanna call them, that's why I called you.
All right, so now the commission reports. Does your city attorney, you have to report?
No. Mr. Mayor, I think we ought to mention this particular thing that the City of Madeira Beach invites everyone to attend a three-two-day workshop with motivation speaker Derek Supri. And I'll tell you, it looks like it's very moving. I don't know who had to do with this, but it's a great idea.
It is a good idea.
I don't need to-
You didn't send your answers in already? You got, you got a good question.
Yeah, you got an email, sweetheart, you gotta answer an email.
I got a thanks back from Derek already.
Me, too.
I didn't get any mail from him.
Well, you got, you got to fill out your survey first.
You got it from, uh, listen, you got the email from Cheryl.
Like one, one day? I just cleaned out my email, had a hundred and seventy-two emails.
You're supposed to answer those.
I'll just click, select all of the links.
Listen, I wanna, I wanna tell you people, I've been busy since the first time.
I know that, I know you.
I didn't even sit down to, I can put it for just this week and all that time.
Would you like for me to come over once so we can help you answer your emails and clean them out for you?
I am telling you, I, I'm, 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 which I'm not-
I'm gonna be about like-
That would be a violation. We're gonna shy away from that one. I'm out.
Okay, sunshine, you should lay it out there, okay?
I'd very rarely see-
Don't, don't bring that.
The city attorney get excited, that was exciting.
I, I was just being nice.
This two-day seminar, though, if you commissioners can make it, I'd appreciate it personally.